All right, let's call to order. The work session for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. We are meeting in the Supervisors' hearing room in Melody Lane in Bisbee. ARS 38431.02H. Public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Board will either attend in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are at time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. We'll begin with roll call. District one, District two, District three, Antonori Sierra. All Supervisors are present and in person, and we will hand off to Ms. Gilman, who will introduce us to the next budget victim. I mean, budget person.
All right. Well, yeah, so I'll just give it right to our county school superintendent, Dr. Jackie, to go over her calls and what she needs for the...
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. We're going to go over basically our budget review.
So you fixed the clicker, Joan. Now it's just...
And these are the things we're going to talk about really quickly within maybe less than 10 minutes. And you're going to see the Accommodation School update because Statute says that I have to brief the Board of Supervisors on Accommodation School once a year. It basically says by one April, but I just wait until we have this budget meeting. These are our responsibilities. Some people may ask, why are you doing what you're doing? If you go into Statute ARS 15, you see that all the things that we're doing right now, all of our projects are within statute. They're either statutory or discretionary. This is our organizational chart. As you see, the last two rows, those are basically grant-funded, and the upper rows are basically funded by the Board of Supervisors, except for the Administrative for Cochise County Accommodation School District and the education program that the jails...
Yeah.
Yes. And the jail. The jail is what the county funds. We are going to be having some problems next year, not this year, because we split that with the Sheriff's Office. And right now, I'm talking to the Sheriff's Office. They're saying that it's going to be hard for them to pay that split because things are... because of what's going on. So since that's in statute, that's just an issue that we will talk about next budget meeting. But I just wanted to give you a warning order that that's going to come up next year.
That jail education, you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. Presently, we have seven students in jail right now.
So this is the revenue that our office generates by managing grants for all of our school districts. It's a breakdown of what we've pulled in for the last three years, and these are funds that are put into the general budget. This is our history of budget versus what we spend every year. This year, we are quite a bit under budget at this point, but we still have three months to go. We should be in line with what we budgeted for last year by the end of the year. This is what we're asking for this year. No increases from last year. We would just like to respectfully ask for any salary increases that you guys give out. And these are our goals for the next fiscal year.
And as you can see, we have all our goals, and we put the ARS by it to let you know that it's not something that we're just doing out of the blue. It's correlating with the statute.
Who's the Advisory Council? I'm sorry, in Douglas?
Yes, of course. Yeah, Douglas and Yavapai are the only two in the state of Arizona that has Advisory Council like that.
What is that, the parents or just schools?
Businesses.
Businesses.
Any questions before I go on? Yes.
Does the Accommodation District, I believe it's referred to as DRP?
Yes, sir.
Does that have paid salary positions?
Yes, and I'm getting ready to go over that, but yes, we have paid salary positions. Not coming out of the Board of Supervisors fund.
I said by the grant.
No, we are an actual school. So we get money from the state per student.
Oh, okay. You get position funding.
Yes, we have. It's... yes.
Yeah, what are the top three salaries of personnel of the Accommodation District?
We have a principal. We have a manager. We have a business manager. We have a principal. We have a business manager. And what's the... And then what we have, we have to contract out our... any special needs or anything like that.
What are the salaries of the top three personnel?
I gave you two. Salaries is 68, and the other one is 30. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about actually the school. We are Cochise County Accommodation School number 0101. We are an actual school. We're equal to... Fort Worth Children's, they're an accommodation school also. It took us around 18 months to get this school up and running, and we wanted a few in the state. And this is what our vision is. Ride like a phoenix, providing motivation, direction, and purpose, opportunity for our opportunity youth. Our opportunity youth are the students who have dropped out of school, and they're not working, and they basically lost hope. Okay? We work with the schools. We tell the schools that we are not competing against you. All those students who have dropped out, usually the schools let us know who they are. We physically go and find them, and we bring them back into school. Why is that so important? Yes, it's important to the student. But anytime we have a dropout in any of our schools, it brings the AF score down, their actual school score down. So an A school could become a B school just because of dropouts. But once we find out that we have those dropouts, their W4, which is dropout, becomes a W1, which is transfer. And the transfer, nothing happens to the AF school. So definitely, we're working with all the schools to ensure that their scores stay up, but we're also concerned about the opportunity youths too. Why are you having this briefing? It's because ARS 15-DRAC says that we have to do this. So we always do it during the budget.
Sorry, how many students do you have?
I'm going to get it.
Okay.
Here's our mission. Our mission is 16 to 22-year-olds. We provide motivation, direction, and purpose. We work with not only with schools, but communities. We have communities who have satellite, businesses who have actually satellite campuses in their businesses that provide an additional level layer of support for our students who are going to these schools. It is an online school. However, they have two spaces where they can come in and get any type of training and counseling that they need. Here are our advisory board members. And the reason why this is important is because we try to be as transparent as possible. And our advisory board, we tell them what we're doing, and Jay basically help us move forward. You'll see that one of our vehicles was donated by Freeport MacMoran. Is that right? All right? And that was because... and they're one of our board members. They knew that we needed a vehicle that to put computers in so that we can go throughout the county to help students as far as connectivity or if we had to give them... Yes. Only thing we don't have right now is the Starlink. Yes.
Are the salary personnel of the DRP also county employees?
No. Project number of students at each Accommodation School. We have to tell you this. Cochise County, we have 51 at the jail, seven, and statewide, we have 302. How do we have... why do we have students in the state? We are attracting students, and they want to be a part of our school.
Questions? So do you break it out by different areas in Cochise County? Or is that just something you can't do? Or that's coming up? Sorry, I'm trying to break it down.
Okay, but we have seven in jail right now. So what we try to do is the students that are in jail, instead of them doing busy work, we don't know what's going to happen. So they can... they might be released, right? If they're released, we want any work that they do to be accepted by any school in Cochise County instead of them just doing busy work. That's why it's very important to have a certified teacher down there. Okay? And then we have them working in the New Crossroads Academy so that they can continue to have the math, the English, all the things they need so that other schools will accept the credits.
Our major teachers?
The teachers are... we hire the teachers through Grad Solutions. So we have our staff, which is the principal, the business manager, and then we have, you know, contracted fed services. But Ingenuity is our platform that we use that has all the work on it. And then the teachers are teaching behind that. But we partner with Grad Solutions, so we pay them 80% of our ADM. The ADM is what we get from students. They get 90%, we get 10%. So basically, we've hired them to do all the other services. But we have to... but basically, we work for them. I'm sorry, they work for us.
How many teachers?
How many teachers? I don't have the exact number of teachers, okay? Because I would say 20, because every subject. So what Grad Solution does under the platform that we use, you have to have a qualified teacher, a certified teacher for each of the subjects. So you have a teacher, and then you have a mentor. So each student will have... they'll go through their subjects, but they also have a mentor. And then they have the additional coverage of us and businesses ensuring that they do their work. And basically, this is how... this is the breakdown right now. And the reason why I'm just going with Cochise County and not the whole thing is because I would believe that Cochise County, the students, if you're basically concerned about.
What did you say, ADM? Is that the acronym that you... is that average daily one?
ABM, Average Daily Membership.
Membership, okay. So it's the same to the attendance, starting like students. And so the teachers get paid by the number of students that they're teaching?
I don't know. I don't have... I don't pay the teachers. Grad Solution pays the teachers. I give them 90% of what the state gives me based on how many students we have. They make sure that the teachers are there, the students are being taught, the teachers are certified, and they get to helping me. And as far as this slide right here, we are still trying to shake the trees of all those students who are opportunity youth. That's my biggest... that's my focus. Opportunity youth are those students who have just given up. They dropped out of school for whatever reason. Some of them dropped out of school because during the COVID. Some of them dropped out of school just because they're frustrated. Some of them dropped out of school because they needed a job for their families. So a lot of our students are either their parents or they're working. And there are a lot of times where we have to go to their work site, okay? Or to their homes to make sure that they get tested and get all the... all the help they need to be successful. And I wanted to show you, this is the student by grade. Our basic demographics are the seniors. We get mostly seniors that may have six credits or less. I mean, very low credits, and that's why it's 16 to 22. So we get a... so we're going to get more seniors than anything, okay? We don't want a lot of freshmen. We don't want a lot of sophomores. Really, our focus are the juniors and seniors. With juniors, if we can, we try to push them back into a regular school because we want them, you know, to have a regular, you know, and a regular education. But the other... our seniors, when they get a certain age, other parents don't want older people in the high school. And then they don't want to get a GED. We're not giving them a GED. We're giving them a bona fide regular diploma, okay? And from there, we work with the students and Cochise College to get them into CTE courses, which we will help pay for while they're still in the school. So the deal with our students are, you pass three classes with a B or above, we will get you into Cochise College as a CTE because we don't have CTE in, you know, in New Crossroads. So we partner with Cochise College, and we're going to get a partnership probably with Pima. And the students are really interested in the online, but some of them are interested in going to school, you know, face-to-face for the welding, you know, and the CNA and stuff like that. So the reason why we have this school is not just for the high school diploma. That's not my goal or our goal. Our goal is to make them productive citizens, validating them, letting them know that life is still good, and they are significant, and we need them to live to their potential.
What does the acronym CTE stand for?
Career and Technical Education.
Say that again.
Career and Technical Education. And you see the pictures? We spent our ESER funding on the back, and that's where Herr Daniels used to have his parking lot. And now it is a beautiful area that has... it has a one big pergola, and then it has three gazebos, and all of them have electricity so that you can... that's our biggest area, but then there's this gazebo in the back. We have three gazebos and one big pergola.
Yes, in serious?
Yes, ma'am. That's right. Right in the back.
And there's a little garden too, isn't there?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's New Crossroads. When we asked for the grant, we told them that we would use the money as for an outside space for our students in the crossroad. We need to give them their own.
So how does somebody from Douglas go there?
They can... we have a website. The schools know. All they have to do is contact us.
So do you provide transportation or do you...
No, we don't, but remember, it's online unless they need...
There's a nice little area here. I guess that's a good gathering place for them or place to meet. So between... you have the biggest population of Sierra Vista and Douglas, right? So how do kids from Douglas, the 25, whatever it is?
Well, most of them... yeah, most of them are old enough to drive. We don't provide the transportation.
And do you think they've worked to drive? Because I mean, that's one thing I hear from Douglas, and one of the big problems going to Cochise College is they don't have the ability to get there because they don't have cars and they can't afford the gas. So I was just asking.
Yeah, when you think about transportation, now you're talking about bigger liability for Cochise County. Okay, now you're talking about bus driver and a lot of other things. So if a student is having problems, we'll work it out. If they come to us and say that we don't have, but taking on transportation, and it's not going to be that many, we have to work it out another way. But that's a lot of liability for the county.
So a gathering place, you have this concernist down the road. You can have one in Douglas, because that seems to be where your population and service and others, right? That's something that can be looked at down the road somewhere.
If you guys give us the money, yes, ma'am.
Do I have to give you the money? Is it something that we can look out within our community?
We... I think that however we can make it work, that's what I said. Whatever we do...
The mayor, we're doing a... trying to do a whole call, like in the old call center where it's going to be maybe boys and girls or maybe just a youth center or whatever. I'm just wondering, something like that could be in addition to at least having someplace where maybe they could meet together or, you know, or kind of, you know, bond or talk about their issue.
Well, Nikki talked about our satellite campuses. We have satellite campuses. I think we have one in Douglas that we're working on right now. So that space is theirs, but then you have other businesses all over, like in Wilcox, etc., etc., who are willing to, okay, this is also your workspace. You have to realize also that in Cochise County, we only have 54 students.
Yes, I agree with you.
Okay? And then the cost of buying a vehicle, hiring a bus driver, and all those things like that, we have to take all that into consideration.
I was just thinking, you know, we have an ability to figure that out down the road. We were doing this whole thing, right? That might be a plus for those kids.
What do you do with the vehicle that you will give them?
The vehicle? That vehicle has... is for testing. We have the computers in there, and when there are mandatory tests that the state requires of all schools, and a lot of times, students, they can't get to us, so we go to them.
Does that include Douglas?
That's everybody, yes.
Okay, so that vehicle can go to Douglas?
Yes, but I think you're talking about bringing the students.
No, I was just saying that...
You're talking about the ambulance? That would do no...
Yes, it is.
No, I was just talking about the ability because there are big things when you're a dropout is to be able to... they can miserable somebody else who's experiencing the same pains, whether it's that your family's broken up or your dad is in jail.
Right.
Or hasn't been able to cross over because he's been deported. So those kinds of things that, you know, that they're able to be able... they're not all just going home and a dropout and a failure and all that.
And you know what? I will tell you what we do with our school. We're very hands-on, okay? And we try to create a culture where our kids are proud to say, I'm from New Crossroads, okay? So we are really working on creating a great culture for our kids, even to the point where down the road, we're going to have a place where there's diapers and clothes and all these other things that students of this age will need. All right? And we graduated 189 students since we opened. And again, just think of it like this. These are seniors.
What's that success rate? Like 70%, 80%? What are you putting out?
You can't really... I would... because some of... just about all the students that just make it all the way through, they graduate, but sometimes they age out. It's 50 and a 22-year-old, and we can only keep them for free.
Until they're 22.
Until they're 22, okay? So if we get students that may have 15 or 16 credits or something like that, they have a... and they work hard, they're going to graduate. Those who have less, we're on them, you know? But then they work, all right? So it is a... it's a labor of love.
Got you.
So I would say success rate as far... and now we're talking Cochise County. We have a really good success rate, okay? But we could always go better. And the way we're going to go better is we're going to be hiring a mentor next year. And that mentor is going to visit not only the regular students, but we have students called McKinney-Vento students. McKinney-Vento students are those students who are homeless, all right? And sometime when you look at the dashboard, you're like, why is your person not doing their work? Well, now we have to get to that student and see where they're at. And that's why we're going to have to have a bigger staff, okay? Because we want to be as personal as possible and not just sitting behind a dashboard looking at numbers. They need to know, and they do, they need to know that we're going to be there for them and with people and their people, and they're important.
And that would be paid by through the accommodations, not the county?
The county pays. This is... county pays nothing for everything, anything. But maybe translation. These are some of the things that we're working on for next year. And we want to have a virtual open house. The problem is the students are working, trying to find that sweet spot where we can get them all together. We have in-person tutoring services. We have one in Douglas. The funding for the grant left, Cochise College is doing it for us at the library. We have to figure out a way to get those monies back. We have our outside learning space. We have our satellite campuses. So these are some of the things that we're doing for next year. And you see that this is our patch principal. Name is Ben Rainham. What he's doing is he goes to the small cafes in Douglas and Wilcox, et cetera, et cetera. He tells the students, I'm going to be here for three hours. Come and see me. Let's go through your records. Let's talk. Let's whatever, and I'll buy you some coffee or whatever. So that's stood it right there, okay? Here's the vehicle, the vehicles. One provides these services. It has to do with computers, et cetera, et cetera. We are still working.
Did you get lucky on the striping or did you have to paint that?
No, we pay for that.
Oh, you did? Okay. I was hoping maybe the ambulance came with the stripes already.
No, it was a regular ambulance, white ambulance.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and we took our money and we designed it.
You get one of the schools to paint it?
No.
Why don't you get the schools to paint it?
We want it because they're the disclaimer that you have to sign when you have the school do it. If it doesn't work out, too bad, you know? With them, it's like, if it doesn't work out, you're going to repaint it.
I got you.
But so we have Freeport-MacMoran donated that to us. We had maybe 37,000 miles on it when they gave it to us. And then, of course, we also have our smaller vehicle that we get around. That concludes our briefing. Any questions?
Still remarkably, the superintendent has very little subscriptions, actually none. And she's only got $5,000 in fleet charges. So how could she efficiently run her office on that amount of money? And then everybody else is like 200,000, 800,000.
But is it budget for the whole school?
She is...
This is the budget, yes. You're looking at the general?
No, no, no. This is the budget for the...
She's pretty mean. I got to hand it to her.
It starts with general?
We try to get our money from other...
Yeah.
This is your school budget. But so just to answer...
Did I miss one? Because the one I'm looking at here, I went through it, and she doesn't have any.
This is the one that... it's not this, though. It's her...
That's nothing.
It's just an ongoing discussion we've been having.
Yeah.
Certain departments. She's not as large as some of them.
I got you. So but I'm just saying, it's just... why doesn't she have a whole bunch of the software licenses and stuff?
A lot of the software licenses are covered by IT. It's all the department.
Yes.
The ones that are not are specific to that department, software that they need.
So she's leveraging other departments?
I am.
That are for her software?
So she's taking it from... Microsoft Office.
Yeah, that's routine.
We have maybe one or two, but basically, I'll tell you, whatever IT or fleet or whoever, whatever they have going on, we will scoop it up and take advantage of it.
I would just think you would have all this kind of software. So she doesn't have, for example, as a school superintendent, you don't have a specific customized software program that you have to use?
Infinite visions.
But is it cloud-based to...
We do have...
That's the $2,700 one?
Uh, no, it's more than that.
Well, that's the only one you got on here. That's what I'm saying.
We don't pay that out of the general fund. We pay it out of...
Oh, grant. Well, this is, again, operating leases and rentals, $2,759.
So this is just for...
It's a different software.
What is it?
But it's a different...
Yes.
It's very counting?
Yes.
I'm sorry. They have their own. But I'm right now like...
Oh, no. No, they're two. So we get money from the state for the school.
Right.
To run the school. And then... but we... I will tell you, we get a lot of support from the county, even to help run that school. We don't have the stress that even other DRPs have because of our main account.
So our finance office does have to report on the accommodations in the district for auditing purposes?
Yes.
So as far as like, you know, the Douglas, say the Douglas School District, right? That is something that they do themselves.
Right.
So this is just for the superintendent. So the school districts that you do the accounting for are the rural school districts like you have?
All of them, always all of them, except, yeah.
We provide more services to some of the smaller districts, yeah.
But the only district we don't provide services to is Sierra Vista. So Douglas, all the schools in the county, with the exception of Sierra Vista, we are their fiscal agent.
Okay.
We do the recons and...
Revenue and...
So expenses.
Let me just ask you a quick question as far as what you get for... Let me just ask you a quick question. As far as, what do you get for, for students from, from the state or from the? Is it eight thousand still? Has it gone up?
Just from the state.
Or from the, you know?
Yeah, the ADM. It's like, you get around seven, eight thousand dollars.
So we're still at like the forty-eight?
Probably forty-eight.
But you know what? I think.
For years we get forty-eight, right? It's been a long time.
Tell, tell the, tell the feds to give us all the federal land. They, they confiscate it and we'll sell it and we'll get all the public property taxes and we'll give it to the schools.
We try to make it work. We, we work really closely with the school district and, and the charters and we, we meet once a month. I think everything, the reason why we're successful is because of the, this system that we're in, the system with the county, the system with the, um, superintendents and system, uh, even with the state. We talk a lot and we collaborate a lot and we all have the same, you know, outcome and goals.
Ask you a very sensitive question, okay? And, and so in Douglas, we have a high proportion of people that come over to the high school and other schools that come from me, often of them. The, like my grandmother's house, right? Finally sold someone from AP. Six or seven kids are registered from where they go to the schools. They're supposed to pay four thousand dollars because they're outside the state for, you know, education, for their education. So there, there, I see the side of why, you know, we're educating hopefully people that may not get an education, but a lot of them could pay because they do come from families that have means. For years and years and years, there's been this theory that the reason we don't go after them to pay more, well, that happens to Douglas, then it has to raise its property taxes. This very stagnant population. We can't get teachers to come down here for other reasons, right? But there's this theory that if we would charge those kids coming over, and if you go down the line, the border and see the buses that pick up these kids, and a lot of these, when you see the tourism, uh, board saying, look at all the crossovers, look at all the tourism, it's not. It's kids crossing over every day they go to school. Can you tell me why we don't go after them? Is it because if we did, then that would bring the, the amount of money that the Douglas School District would get less because we're, why has nothing ever been looked at or hasn't been looked at? Because I know this was an issue fifteen years ago. My brother-in-law's on the school board. It's a very sensitive question. Because people get really upset, but I would just like to know, because people ask me that all the time and I really don't know what. I see both sides, but I'm not even sure what it is that the state and the schools see as not going and looking at that as a possibility we have more income going into those schools.
Well, first of all, the education, educators are not, you know, house and address police.
Yes, but the administrators are.
Okay, no.
So you mean the school superintendent of Douglas has no right or no, so who would?
The feds, well, the state and the fed says the only thing that we have to do when they bring us a piece of paper that says, this is their address.
And there's twelve kids coming out.
Now, what we tell the superintendents, what Nikki and I tell the superintendents, do a red flag if you see, and that, that, that's not happening anymore, but if you see ten to twelve students coming out of one address. Okay, now we have, and then we have, now we have the judges who are not the guardianships are not given out as freely as they, they, they were before. So there is a big slowdown in that right there.
Well, it's interesting because we see that, you know, like, I have friends whose kids are in the high school and every, you know, when my son graduated, when Isabel graduated two years ago, I would tell, say that the high school is more people from AP going than there is actual students. So they're superior, right? If those people stop coming because you're gonna charge them four thousand, maybe not all of them report it, then you're gonna have high school that may be diminished by half its population. And that is a detriment to the kids that are there.
The law stops us from checking where a person lives. They just, they, they, they tell us what we, we're not supposed to ask if they're illegal or not, et cetera, et cetera. That's a, that's, that's a law thing. So what we do is, the only rule we have is, for example, if you're living, if you're an American and you're living in AP, you wanna, you wanna come over here, they have to pay. They have, they have to pay, they have to pay a tuition. Now, any of these students that are here on this side, on our side, if they have proof that they live here and they have guardianship, and that's where you get all those kids. That, then they can go to the school. They may, so they may have this address here. They may go back across the border on the weekend or whatever.
Every, at the end of the schedule. What I need to do is go down and, just do it.
Yes, I've been there and I, I understand, but.
We got the assistance.
That's out of our, our.
Thing that nobody wants to deal with and it's, it's, it's.
It's, well, no, it's the legislature. So what you do is, we, we've been complaining about it. What you guys gotta do, you gotta go up there and talk to them.
Well, I'll get together with you then.
Any, any other questions for Dr. Clay on her budget, on, on her budget?
Thank you.
Very frugal. Gotta hand it to you. Yep, so thanks for coming in, Dr. Clay. Appreciate it.
Thank you, um, all three of you. All of you. Thank you for your support too.
See you. Alright, let, let Phil know. He's up, he's on deck. Alright, oh, we're adjourned.